I'd like to welcome you to the November 25th, 2019 Board of Selectments meeting. A call to order is now open by reminding you that as required by open meeting law, you are hereby informed that the town will be video and audio taping or as well as live broadcasting this public meeting. In addition, anyone in the audience who plans to video or audio tape this meeting must notify the chairman prior to the start of the meeting. Seeing no one will ask you to join me in a pleasure of allegiance.
My pleasure and allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Joe, you have a sewer update?
I do, thank you, Mr. Chairman. And first let me apologize for my voice, I'm sure it's going to give out shortly, but before I get into the specifics of the weekly update, I just want to advise the board and through the board to the general public. As you recall, last week there was an extension of, or there was a grant of extension of hours to Robert B. Hour for Tuesday through Thursday of last week. Unfortunately, there were some communication breakdowns and that didn't occur in the way that it should have. So, next week, staff, including myself, will be meeting with representatives from Robert B. Hour, C.D.M. Smith, as well as Weston and Sampson, to discuss that process, make sure what happened last week isn't repeated as far as hours beyond what was agreed upon. And I fully expect to be able to report to the board next Monday night of our success with that meeting. At present, however, there is a moratorium on the granting of extended hours for the sewer project until that occurs. The construction update that was submitted on November 19th is as follows. The one-week look ahead for this week of November 25th through the 27th, because again there'll be no work conducted on Thursday or Friday. And we know that they have cleared away from Route 137 and 39 this week in light of the Thanksgiving holiday. This week, they're working, Crew Number One is beginning work on Old Salty, and Crew Number Two is commencing installation on Herndon. They will be, Crew Number Two will be at Herndon for three days only. Next week, December 2nd, we see them resuming work of both Route 39. Sewer Crew Number One, continue installation on Route 39 west from Spencer's Trace. They'll be working on service and sideline stubs. And again, unfortunately, that means the detours will come back after the holiday week. They will also commence installation on Old Heritage Way. Sewer Crew Number Two will continue installation on Route 137. Again, the detours that we've experienced will be back in place at that time. And then the three-week look ahead for December 9th through December 13th. Sewer Crew Number One will continue installation on Old Heritage Way, while Sewer Crew Number Two will continue on Route 137. Again, detours will still be present.
Thank you, Joe. Anyone for weekly public comment?
What is that? Which is it?
Public comment, either one. They're...
Good. Good. Carolyn. I seem to do this each time. So, Chris Joyce, Harwich Voter Information Committee, and just want to update you on our plans for our civic engagement program with Brooks Free Library. In our September annual report to the board, we reference developing a program, civic engagement, a type of engagement program. And Ginny Hewitt, library director, has also been before this board to reference the same and also discuss briefly, I understand, at a department head meeting. So, we're now ready to launch, and we're calling it Know Your Town. We'll send invite to the Board of Selectmen and department heads describing the program, the six dates in January, February, and March that we're going to hold the hour-long program discussion at the conference room in the library. Let me see, here are my notes. There'll be Tuesdays from 2:00 to 3:00. We'll, of course, include all the dates and times. We'll ask the department heads to prepare, really with four basic questions, what the mission and challenges are of each of their departments, how does the department interact with other departments, what's the annual budget, what line items are included, and are there ways for residents to participate with that department? May there be volunteer opportunities? There may be a committee associated with, for instance, council and aging. So, we're trying to get, you know, our residents ready, thinking about that. And also, a goal is to prepare residents to learn more about those services, what the department offers, how they're funded, those challenges. And we hope that kind of leads to better preparation at the town meeting. So, did I talk too fast and say too much?
No, very good. It's a hard job, because we need people to pay attention.
Yeah.
And we'll also have budget meetings, financial meetings, that's on everyone's mind as well, so...
And we're going to try to make this as easy as possible. If a department head or representative wants power point slides, we'll make them for them. But it can just be a straight, you know, hour discussion in the conference room at the library. So, more to follow.
Okay, thank you, Chris.
Yep, you're welcome.
Thanks, Chris.
Carolyn, you...
Oh, hello. Yeah. I just wanted to let you know that it's that time of year again, and it's mitten tree program. Some of you are familiar, but I think I'll talk to you about it anyway. We get names from children who are on Cape Cod who don't have families or are currently situated in a foster care situation. These are all Cape Cod children, and they have wish lists. Wish list, trying to say that five times fast. And so, we work with the Department of Children and Family Services. We make mittens up. Each mitten has a request on it of what the child would like. This year, we have mittens and gingerbread people. The gingerbread people might have just one thing, so if you just wanted to buy one of the child's requests, we'll package those up together. So, I always like to give an example. This is a child who would like warm clothes, pajamas, and teething toys. So, they're not asking for extravagant gifts. And you can pick these up. All you have to do is let us know at the front desk what the mitten's name is, so we can keep track, because we don't want any child getting lost or not getting their wishes. So, that is starting, I guess technically right now. Run over there, everyone, get there! And the gifts are due back to us unwrapped by December 13th, so we can make sure they get delivered in time. I'm going to have...
Is that a real mitten that you have there?
It is.
Can I have it?
I'd be happy to bring this up. Is that a real mitten? What are you, I got prompt mittens or something else? Come on.
Larry's getting the first one.
Yeah.
Larry, woo!
Well, the story is, last year I procrastinated, and by the time I asked, there were none left.
Me, too. I had to go to the post.
And I'm leaving for Thanksgiving, so I wanted to be sure I got one. Thank you, Carolyn.
Thank you very much. I'll leave you one of these flyers, too, with your directions on it. But now, I'll turn it over to Erica, who has more fun news.
Hi, good evening. Erica Strasbeck from the Harwich Cultural Center. This Saturday, from 10:00 to 1:00, we have our third annual holiday open house. We'll have open artist studios throughout the building, some kids' crafts. The Blue Institute at Cape Cod is doing a child seaweed event. And then in the library, the former library space, we have over 30 local artists, craftsmen for a holiday bazaar, so showcasing a lot of their local wares would be very exciting. And then we have our super... ...the building and find out where all 30 of our penguins are hidden. So, this is a fun little example. You'll have to find him in the building somewhere. We'll take your coupon back, and then you'll be entered to win a gift basket of local gifts that have been donated to the center. And then another thing, on Monday at 10 o'clock, we have our December Coffee and Conversation, which we've launched last month. So, this month, we'll have local artist Heather Bloom coming to talk about her work and also her position on the Provincetown Art Museum. So, we're looking to build that program, bring in local artists and have different conversations about cultural matters happening here in Harwich and Lower Cape. So, we're excited for that. So, that, again, is on Monday at 10 o'clock. It's the first Monday of every month. Thank you.
Thank you, Erica. Anyone else for announcement? I have one. We lost a member of our community this weekend, Ron Armbruster, who we all know. He was very active in the family pantry for years, but many of us know him because he was a cameraman at the town meetings. He interviewed all of us, he was around everywhere. It's hard to think of a more pleasant person to be around, and he was working all the time with his camera. Jamie, I know he worked with you. If you wanted to brief us a bit, that'd be nice as well, but...
Ron was my volunteer for the past nine years, and before that, he was volunteering with Channel 18 since the opening of the community center. He showed up 15 minutes early every Wednesday and Thursday. He was generous to the family pantry, but he was also very generous with his time. Anytime you needed Ron, you could call him and he'd be right there. He was also a true gentleman, and he was always impeccably dressed, and he will be missed.
Certainly will. Ed?
Yeah, he was probably the most generous gentleman that you could imagine. It was always fun to go in and getting, to get interviewed with him at the camera for the Cranbury Festival or whatever. It's a star community.
Okay, thank you, Ed.
Okay, one other thing also, this Saturday, from 9:02 at the community center, the Lower Cape Kiwanis Club is having their community market, a combination of arts, artists and craftsmen and antique dealers and unique things that people are now very much into collecting things and repurposing and remanufacturing. So, it'll be a good show out.
Thank you. Anyway, if not, we'll move to the consent agenda.
Consent agenda, A, vote to approve Caleb Chase fund request in the amount of $350; B, vote to approve Caleb Chase fund request in the amount of $800; C, vote to approve Caleb Chase fund in the amount of $746.62.
Second.
Any discussion? Anyone from the audience? If not, on favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Moving on to old business procurement update, and just as a background, Joel Griffin reported to us, I think, a month ago now, on outstanding procurement and listing of what was left to do and give us some thought on priority and moving through. So, Joe, you're going to update us on that.
Yep, thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, thank you to the board for patience. I was able to give you the memo last week, but wanted to make sure we had as complete and up-to-date matrix as you have in front of you this evening. I would apologize for the size of the document, but I think that just tells you how much we have going on. The last time I presented this, the comment I made then still stands. This is reflective of procurement activity that either myself or Griffin Rider, our town engineer, who partners with me on procurement are aware of or have become aware of by talking with department heads. So, it's by no means an exhaustive list, and it's by no means a full accounting yet of everything we've been working on. Some changes that you'll notice, there are obviously, thankfully, more that are listed as complete. I've also changed it so that it's listed alphabetically by department if we know it that is responsible for it. But beyond that, I also wanted to just advise the board, generally speaking, how we've been able to handle procurement for the last six months. So, first, and you'll see it in the memo that I provided, there's really two tracks to procurement as we've done it. And the first track are what we see are invitations for bids. Those are the three projects that were referenced in the memo. So, we would have Lower County Road Patching Bid, that's on the docket, the Brooks Park Lighting, and the Brooks Academy Engineering. So, for Lower County Road Patching, as I mentioned before, this was a procurement that was held up simply because we had to prioritize the catch basin invitation for bids that preceded that. I did have a conversation with our DPW director regarding this particular budget, and his preference is still for the town to proceed with our own invitation for bids. As you recall, we did discuss possibly using the cooperative bid that was done by Barnstable County. But Link and I are thinking that if we work on the IFB for the Lower County Road Patching because the factories are closed and the plants won't come back online until probably April, if we go through the procurement process, we'll be able to test whether or not we can get a better price in the open market by bids, right around the same time that the county will be refreshing their bids. So, we'll have two different things to compare it to, because we wouldn't expect the plants to be back online before March 31st. So, that would be the new target date for that one. You will get a request next week from DPW director to approve the use of the Chapter 90 funds. That's just a perfunctory move before we do any bids or contracts. It's requesting use of those funds from the state, and we'll have that ready for you next week. The Brooks Park Lighting, really the update with that is, we're still trying to vet the use of an out-of-state procurement cooperative. We've had no luck working with the state to validate that Sourcewell is a successor cooperative based out of Minnesota. We know that we had a relationship with the predecessor organization. We're just trying to vet if we can still use them, because if we can, that should expedite the process insofar as very specific bid requirements for the lights that would be used at Brooks Park. And last among the three is the Brooks Academy Engineering. And I offer these two because, as I've said before, the Brooks Park Lighting, as you can see in the matrix, this is a project that had funding as far back as fiscal year 19, and Brooks Academy Engineering has funding for this fiscal year. So, they're both labor-intensive, if you will, with regard to doing invitation for bids, but really, it's trying to figure out which one to prioritize over the other. And presently, our mindset is, the first one in would be the next one up. However, of these three, right now, our priority would be Brooks Park Lighting, Brooks Academy Engineering, and then Lower County Road would be later in the winter. The second track, and it's a much broader category for procurement, is really what I look at as probably four different unique categories of procurement. And the first one ties into a project that Griffin and I have been working with our finance director on. Under, most procurements that we do are under Chapter 30B, so that's supplies and services, what used to be referred to as goods and services. And under 30B, any vendor that's going to invoice the town and their invoices exceed $10,000 or equal or exceed $10,000, that triggers a requirement for a contract. So, the finance director was able to run a report demonstrating many vendors that are in that category. So, what we're trying to do is now end those vendor relationships and try to follow up with a contract. So, we're trying to catch up with that process. Going forward, the message has been consistent with department heads that if they expect that their vendor relationship, so to speak, is going to hit that $10,000 threshold, we're going to automatically with a contract. So, trying to level set and get to that, invoices for $10,000 or more has been not a small project at this point. The second type is what I would call unanticipated, and that's just a friendly way of saying it wasn't on the calendar, it wasn't something we, but is now reaching critical mass with a department head or with a vendor. So, it was not previously vetted, it was not expected. And that concept sort of ties in with what I call the walk-ins. Same kind of concept, we have the 40-plus projects you see on the matrix. And then lastly, what I would refer to as corrective actions, there are a handful of procurements where either the incorrect procurement method was used, whether it be solicitation for quotes instead of bids or vice versa, or in cases that not, the incorrect contract was used. And so, we're trying to work to correct that by issuing corrective contracts. So, that's the sense of where we are with procurement. Again, if left to our own devices, we're trying to balance the urgent needs of the departments versus those projects that we're aware of, first in, hopefully first out, insofar as what we can work on. If this sounds bleak, the good news is, I know that Carolyn has been trained in procurement, so we've got a department head that knows procurement. Should have four more that will be able to obtain their certification, probably within the next year, because they've gone through the falls version of the three procurement classes. So, we're getting more people educated by OSD on procurement, and the more people know, the better off we'll be.
Thank you, Joe. Just a quick comment. I learned a few weeks ago that we were, had fallen behind on procurement activity. I think many of us knew that. And rather than just make that an overwhelming issue, I asked Joel and Griffin to list all the procurement items out there, prioritize them, can't solve world hunger in one day, but just walk through it and catch up. They're doing that. I appreciate what Carol and Joe are doing as well, though, is they're looking at the process, to be sure we have a process in place that we don't do this again. And that's causing us some hardships in that when you, but the hardship's only in the short term. We've been asking for more details on the contracts, everything is vetted, you know, as a board, we've been doing that for some time, but now we're putting that process in place. And in the meantime, what that causes us to do is almost in some ways, change our culture a bit, and that get all the details up front, so we can get a legitimate and concrete bid, and we can move forward. So, we're losing some time now, but I'm convinced that going forward, we're going to be much stronger and will be, it will be quicker. I would ask Joe, and in deference to my other board members, we just got this before the meeting, and so I would ask that we put this on the agenda, just for a short discussion topic, next time when everyone's had a chance to review it. And so, if there's concern about the priority that Joel and Griffin and Carol's giving these, get some feedback after you've had a chance to review it. Is that okay with everyone else?
Thanks for that.
So, Mr. Chairman, in line with that, then, what we can do is we'll further update it tomorrow, but it'll be in the packet for next week's meeting.
So, we have a...
And if the board wants it electronically, if you're into Excel, you can filter it. I'll send it out that way as well.
That'd be good. And then we can have a discussion on it. This is great work, though. Carol, thank you as well. Any other comments, questions going forward? Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Had a conversation with Carol today about the Affordable Housing Trust contract that you see here listed, number one. That was, I mean, it's listed here as signed by the TA, but he was actually functioning as the chair of the housing trust at that point. What I do anticipate doing, because I think it's a good idea, and it worked here pretty well, and it's, as you describe it, moving on forward, even though the trust has its own contracting authority, I absolutely want to make sure, before it goes in front of the trust, that it's got a legal opinion on it.
Yeah, same process.
And it's got Carol's review of the sufficiency of funds.
Okay, thank you, Don. Moving next into Town Administrator's Report.
So, Mr. Chairman, the main item we have there, as you see in the packet, was a letter from our CPA firm, Powers &amp; Sullivan, no relation. The finance director is asking the board if there's consensus to continue to engage the services of Powers &amp; Sullivan, as they've outlined in their letter. I just tell the board that the, this service is exempt from procurement under 30B, Section 1B-15 accountancy. So, we're really just looking for consensus as if the board wants us to continue the relationship.
Okay.
Both the finance director and I recommend that we do.
All right. Maybe Carol, the finance director, if you could just give us a very brief update of what's going on with this for the people in town who don't pay attention to audits? Or us in the board, it doesn't either, I guess. Because now, these are new, are this, did we change auditors a couple of years ago?
The town changed auditors three years ago.
Okay.
So, Powers &amp; Sullivan, we went out for an RFP process. We received proposals and price quotations, and then through a process, we made a recommendation to the board, and we recommended Powers &amp; Sullivan. I'll tell you, I have worked with them before in other communities. They're very thorough, which is something that I think that you want to pay attention to when you have an auditor. I have arranged with them that they go to two departments a year and do an intensive review of those departments, their financial procedures. And so, that is included in this engagement letter that they have sent along. I did request that they send this for you. So, they're here timely. They're typically here in April to do some preliminary testing, and then they're here in August to do their full audit of the financial records of the town. They leave the town of Harwich, and they go back to their office, and they have additional work that they have to complete. They submit the CAFA for the town, which is the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. They submit that to the GFOA, which is the Government Financial Association. It's due before the end of December, and they have done that for the past, will be, three years, coming next month. So, we have a good working relationship with the firm.
Thank you, Carol. Any questions for Carol? Comments? I think the consensus, all we need on this is for you to move ahead, and because like, I presume it takes a fair amount of your time as well with the auditors and...
It does.
And they'll be here, what, about a week or so?
They're typically here two weeks, one week in April and then one week...
Thank you, Carol.
You're welcome.
Departmentary reports?
Mr. Chairman, I just have one final item under Town Administrator's Report. We have a department head meeting tomorrow, and as the department heads will tell you, this Friday is the deadline for them to submit their fiscal year 21 recommendations, as well as warrant articles. I'll be resuming the inclusion of the FY '21 budget timeline calendar, starting with next week's agenda, and we'll have more updates as the month goes on.
Yeah, okay, good, thank you. Selectmen's reports? Steve, we'll start this in... Michael? Don?
What happened?
I started one end and then the other end.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I hadn't forgotten yet.
Just didn't want to skip you over. Two things, this is just for the future thought. We had agreed back in May that we were going to get at least quarterly reports on the revolving funds, because heretofore, we've had absolutely no look into that, and we are increasing the use of those in different programmatic areas, and they should have at least the same scrutiny as our budgeted items. So, I'd like to see us get to that point where there's a review and we can see what's going in and what's coming out.
You're certainly correct. We did agree to that, so...
So, there's that. Then there's a happy thought, since nobody else has said it, I want to wish everybody on behalf of the board a happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you, Don. I have a comment, and that is, it's also very positive, but thanks for the Thanksgiving. You know, we all think we have the best committees on Cape Cod, volunteer committees, and...
But we know we do.
But we know we do. And we've always, we always talk about training. Conservation Commission goes once a year to training in Holy Cross. I learned from a couple of our Board of Health members that they are starting training on the Board of Health, and this is quite extensive. I'll just read this. It's run by Boston University. Free online training, a quote that Megan gave me, is very extensive, requires a large time commitment, two in-person seminars, three webinars, and 17 one-hour online courses. So, they'll be training from mid-November until mid-April. You know, all our members spend time on their committees and work, but just outside of that scope, and I really applaud their, Sharon's one of them is in our audience, so... But we're always looking for training for other committees as well, but this is next in the stars. I just want to applaud them for taking after, and Megan in the Board Health Chair for making this reality. for making this a reality. And that's all I have, so I'll entertain the...
Motion to adjourn?
Second.